Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Atomo City Council meeting this evening. And the first thing we're going to do, would everybody please rise, we're going to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Chris will go ahead and take the roll.
Councilmember Hall.
Here.
Councilmember Pope.
Here.
Councilmember Rowe.
Here.
Councilmember Galloway.
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Recommend motion to approve consent agenda items B1 through B5.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Councilmember Pope.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Yes. And then do we have a motion to approve the items on tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Councilmember Pope.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Yes. The next item on the agenda is City Administrator Phil Raff's report, so I'll turn it over to Phil.
All right, thank you, Honorable Mayor. So what I have on the agenda for tonight is to talk about an update and timeline for the establishment of the Human Rights Commission. This was something that guidelines or framework had been approved earlier this year. And so just a quick update to council and to the general public, here is the next steps. At the next meeting on May 17th, we'd look to present a draft charter that was kind of part of that, the first part of the process with that and that framework. And then following any comments, any revisions, anything that council may see at that meeting, we'd look to put that into an ordinance format and then have that available for the June 7th meeting to have a first reading of ordinance to look to reestablish a local human rights commission. And then there's, at that point, essentially two paths. Either the council approves the first reading, likes what they see, and could either proceed to a second and third reading at subsequent meetings, or look to waive the second and third reading, and that's just basically alters the timeframe a little bit. So if you're looking at having the second and third reading, that'd be at the June 21st and July 5th meetings, and then from the July 19th, first meeting in August, August 2nd, look to make any appointments to that commission, and then have an orientation with the Iowa Department of Human Rights. They are creating a new position, and one of the things they're looking at is having orientations and welcoming for groups, just like what we're looking at establishing. So they are very excited about having us be a guinea pig, so to speak, with that, and looking to present and work with us to get things off and running on a great first start there. Subsequently, if we're looking at the alternate path and looking at waiving the second and third readings at the June 7th meeting, then the June 21st, July 5th meetings, we'd look at making the appointments to that commission and having an orientation sometime during the period of July 11th to 22nd. And so depending on people's availability and working with the department, we'd look at that. The later one would be August 1st to 12th, somewhere in this first couple of weeks of August. So if you're looking at mid-July to mid-August, as far as having the commission hopefully established, up and running, and in an orientation in place.
My preference would be to go ahead and present with the waiving of the second and third reading.
Okay.
I would agree with that.
So we'll move forward with that in mind. The council can obviously change your mind at that June 7th meeting, and then we'll get that charter to you as soon as we can, and look to present that officially to the May 17th meeting. And then pending any changes, look to put that into ordinance format.
Thank you, Phil. I really appreciate you providing that update tonight.
All right, and that is all I have for tonight. Honorable Mayor.
Okay. We do have people that have indicated that they'd like to speak on some of the agenda items tonight. We have some people that have indicated they want to speak on agenda item G6 and also I5. Has everybody that wants to speak on an agenda item tonight filled out one of these forms? Anybody else want to fill out a form that hasn't already done so? Because I'm going to go ahead and have you speak when we get to that point on the agenda. So we'll make sure we get everybody brought to the front. You'll have three minutes to present your comments and identify yourself and your address, and we'll have you come and speak when we get to that section of the agenda. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody that wants to speak has already filled out a form. Okay. Okay, the next thing is we have six public hearings that we're going to try and get through as quick as we can this evening, because I know we have a lot of things on the agenda tonight. So I'm going to open up, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the disposal of city-owned property located at 1202 Castle.
I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. And I believe Zach is going to do this by phone.
Thank you, Mayor. Hopefully, everybody can hear me all right, and I appreciate you letting me present this over the phone. 1202 Castle is a property the city acquired. It was abandoned. Are we good now?
Yes.
Okay. 1202 Castle is a property the city acquired. It was abandoned. It sued to take title under Iowa Code, Chapter 67A. The city accepted bids on the property until 2:00 PM on August, I'm sorry, April 28th, 2022. Six bids were received. Terry Wilson submitted the best bid in the amount of $13,600, and staff recommends accepting the bid. A copy of the bid tab was included in the packet.
Does council have any questions for Zach? Since this is a public hearing, does anybody in the audience have a question for our Community Development Director, Zach Simonson? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will go ahead and take the roll.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Councilmember Pope.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Yes.
Resolution number 103, 2022, accepting the bid and approving the sale of city-owned property in the city of Atomoa, Wapalo County, Iowa, commonly known as 1202 Castle, to Terry Wilson for the sum of $13,600. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 103, 2022.
Do we have a motion for the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Councilmember Pope.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the disposal of city-owned property located at 107 North Ransom.
I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing, and I believe Zach, you're going to do this one as well.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is another property the city took, Title 267A. The city accepted bids on this property until the same time, 2:00 PM, April 28th, 2022. And I don't know for sure, but I'm pretty sure this is a record. We received 14 bids on the property. Sathish Kumar Chinakonda and David Asorio submitted the best bid in the amount of $20,000, and staff recommends accepting the bid. A copy of that bid tab is also included in the packet.
Does council have any questions for Zach? Does anyone in the public have any questions for Mr. Simonson? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Hall.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Councilmember Pope.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Yes.
Resolution number 105, 2022, accepting the bid and approving the sale of city-owned property in the city of Atomoa, Wapalo County, Iowa, commonly known as 107 North Ransom, to Saskish Kumar Chinakonda and David Asorio for the sum of $20,000. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 105, 2022.
If the recommendation is presented.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Councilmember Pope.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing approving the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the 2022 Catch Basin Replacement Program.
I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing, and Larry Seals, our Public Works Director, I believe, is going to take this one.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is our annual Catch Basin project, and we'll reconstruct, raise Catch Basin wells with new grades, as indicated on the plans and specifications. Basins are located on various streets within the city of Atomoa. Bids were received and opened by the city of Atomoa on May 25th, 2022, at 2:00 PM, and a bid report and bid award recommendation will be presented at the City Council meeting on June 7th, 2022, or at a later date as determined by staff. Annually, we budge $50,000 out of the sewer fund for this program.
Does council have any questions for Larry? Does anyone in the audience have a question for Mr. Seals? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Councilmember Pope.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Yes.
Resolution number 117, 2022, approving the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the 2022 Catch Basin Replacement Program. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 117, 2022.
So moved.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Councilmember Pope.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing approving the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the 2022 Sanitary Utility Access Program.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and I believe Larry is going to take this item as well.
This is another one of our annual programs. It'll install sanitary utility accesses into the existing sanitary sewer line and the associated patchwork. Manholes will be placed at locations that have either limited access points or problems prone to plugging and increased cleaning maintenance, and from time to time, if they're just collapsing, if they're old brick manholes. Bids will be received and opened by the city of Atomoa on May 25th, 2022, at 2:00 PM. A bid report and bid award recommendation will be presented at the City Council meeting on June 7th, 2022, or at a later date as determined by staff, and we also budget $50,000 annually for this out of the sewer fund.
Does council have any questions for Larry? Does anyone in the public have any questions on this item for Mr. Seals? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Councilmember Pope.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Yes.
Resolution number 118, 2022, approving the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the 2022 Sanitary Utility Access Program. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 118, 2022.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Councilmember Pope.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the intent to consider a three-year lease agreement with Atomoa Habitat for Humanity for the lease of office space in the City Hall Building located at 105 East 3rd Street, Atomoa, Iowa.
I'm going to open the public hearing, and I believe Zach, you're going to take this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Atomoa Habitat for Humanity requires office space to satisfy the requirements of their program and also provide space for their executive director to work. This would be a three-year lease of space in Room 200B, which is on the second floor. It's sort of immediately across the hall from where the council dais is, and it'd be the second room, so the room furthest back in there. It's 256 square feet of space, and this lease would provide that for $737.28 a year, which is $2.88 per square foot, which is the same rate that we charge other nonprofit tenants.
Does council have any questions for Zach?
Is this room currently empty, Zach?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I didn't catch that, I'm sorry.
That's all right, Phil got it, thank you.
He asked if it was currently empty, and I responded it was.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council for Zach? Does anyone in the audience have a question for Mr. Simonson? If not, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Councilmember Pope.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Yes.
Resolution number 120, 2022, approving the three-year lease agreement with Atomoa Habitat for Humanity to lease office space in the City Hall Building located at 105 East 3rd Street and authorize the mayor to sign the lease. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 120, 2022.
So moved.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Councilmember Pope.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the appeal of the Atomo Police Chief's order dated April 21st, 2022, to remove a dog from the city limits pursuant to Atomo Municipal Code, Chapter 7, Section 11, and the possession of Casey and Yedira Kelderman under his or her control on or on the premises of their property at 1525 North Court Street, Atomoa.
I'm going to open the public hearing, and I think Police Chief Farrington is going to have an opening statement.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. March 23rd of 2022, the Atomo Police Department became aware of an animal bite and an attack of a 14-year-old girl. An investigation ensued by the police department. We also learned of an incident of the same dog, where it was reported on September 12th of 2021, where it attempted to bite and attack another person. Pursuant to Municipal Code 7-1, an investigation was conducted. A recommendation was made to me that the animal was deemed vicious, and pursuant to Municipal Code, it was ordered out of the city on... April 21st of 2022. Also pursuant to the Municipal Code, the animal owners are able to appeal that order of removal, and that's why we're here today.
Next, we'll go ahead and have an opportunity for the appellant to provide the reason for their appeal and deliver any other evidence to substantiate their claim. So if you'd come forward, please, and give your name and your address.
Can you hear me? My name is Yedira Kelderman. I live at 1525 North Court Street, here in Atomoa, Iowa. I have a couple of videos to share with you, I believe, just so you know what the dog is in question. So this is Odie. Odie is, has been our puppy since 2018, when we first got him. He does wait for his food, like I was telling Officer Williams. This is, I believe, City Council already has the audio to go with that. You can hear me saying his commands, to sit, stay, he does wait, so he does know those He waits for release. In question, I'm, give his water, we sit, we pray, and then he eats his food. The next video is a video of us outside. We do keep the dog on run. We realize that he is a big dog. He does have a lot bark, and so he is consistently on this run, always on a leash. We play ball outside, you can see the house next, or the school next door. At the time that this video was taken, there was kids at the playground, there was another little dog barking also in the playground. He sits and he plays, yes, he's looking over to see it. So my order today is to appeal the order to remove the vicious animal issued by Chief of Police on April 21st in regards to our black and white pointer hound mix, Odie. The order that I received from Chief stated that my dog was deemed vicious as defined by the Atomo Municipal Code, Section 7-1. The code stated that the vicious animal is an animal that exhibits a propensity to attack, bite a person without provocation, or has attacked, bitten, maimed, or killed any domestic animals without provocation. The letter also referenced two instances in which Odie became loose and had an incident with our neighbors, the first being, reference to the letter was dated to September 12th, 2021. I don't know if that date is accurate or not. I know that Odie did break loose from our dog run, we did have, that we did have it installed originally, the first one. He is a very big dog. He was excited to run over, scared our neighbor, he did jump on her, there was, her sort of was torn. We did restrain Odie, hold him back. He was not allowed out except on a leash until we had our run fixed. The second incident, which is the one that's more in question here, is March 23rd, 2022. That one was where my son, my 12-year-old son Wyatt, was taking him out, to put him on the dog run, and then you received images of the chain that is put on to his harness. It is a heavy hook, and it does pull back out. Odie heard the distinct click, and he took off. My son yelled out for him. At the time, our neighbor's 14-year-old daughter was taken out the trash, which is located outside of her garage. In that process, my son screamed, she screamed, my dog very excitedly went over, and somehow he nipped her. I honestly did not think that my dog bit her at the time. Chief Williams was the one who confirmed that he had actually nipped her, because what I observed was that he ran over. He was very excited. He is a very reactive dog. He was barking and caught her. I did see the scar on the hand, or the mark she had cut on her hand, so I did walk her over to our neighbor's door, and then I ended up, I went over and, you know, told her I was going to be back, because I had to go deal with my dog and my son. By the time I made it, dealt with my dog and my son in the house, she, the mom had already called my husband to let him know what happened, so then I just waited for my husband to arrive. So what we are asking for is an opportunity to be able to prevent this from happening again, again. He is not what I would deem a vicious animal. Our oldest son has had numerous runs over, many of which are here today to place for several hours at a week in the past several years, and Odie has been around them without any incidents. He does bark at the door, sniffs, and then he walks around, he barks when they get way too loud and rowdy, but he's never gotten attacked or bit, any of that. We've had numerous birthday parties that are for our children at our home with kids running around without any incidents. If and when Odie has been too excited, or we feel that it may aggravate or intimidate any of your children, we put him in a kennel, which we do have in our household. All children have had friends spend the night without any incidences. We have hosted many friends at our house for life through holidays and picnics without any incidents. Again, Odie is always on a short leash. When we have new people arrive at our house, he does bark, he does sniff, we make sure to incorporate them before we release him, because again, we are dealing with the super excited reactive that he is. So some of the preventions, what I've put in our letter that we'd like to be able to take place would be to seek professional help. Again, I've kind of only trained him, as you can see, based off what I've been able to read or been able to do within things that I read online, you know, parent or dog training books, things like that, so seeking professional help to be able to help him deal with our reactiveness. I have contacted Melissa Childs, as well as Shannon with Dingo, to get something in place for him. We would be able to put up a fence between our house and that of our neighbors to ensure that not only is she not intimidated by our dog, but that we have that privacy fence to be able to prevent something like this from happening again. We've looked, I've looked at an in-ground fence to be able to prevent some of that as We can always ensure, of course, that our, only an adult takes out the dog, or we change the chain in which it's, so it's not hard to latch. I showed Officer Williams, the dog run does actually go all the way into the house, so we actually can't get him on a leash or in the, inside the house. The incident simply happened because my son was at the door when it happened, when trying to hook him. In the pictures, you'll see several of, my dog is afraid of baby gates, so I can literally put a baby gate up, and he doesn't go past it. I don't know what the deal is with baby gates, he just doesn't like them. If it is a concern, then I did offer here that we would be even, I don't feel it's needed, but we would muzzle him if needed when we were taking him out for a walk, if that is a concern. We're really looking for what can we do to prevent, because we really would like to see our dog be able to be back home. I had not realized how much of an emotional support animal this dog is for me. It has been very hard with not having him present. He sleeps with me every night, he's the first thing I see, first thing in the morning. I wanted to be able to share a letter, one more letter that you did not get to see in your packet, which actually came out from my daughter's fiance's mother-in-law, which is dated from recent. It says, "To whom it concerns, this letter is in regards to the situation with the Kelderman's dog, Odie. Our family included, my one-and-a-half-year-old granddaughter, have been to the home of Casey and Yedira Kelderman for many family dinners, who have never felt afraid or threatened in any way by Odie. Odie is a bundle of energy and a big baby. Odie has always been on his link while outside. The Kelderman have always shown that Odie is well taken care of and loved by the family." Not going to lie, he is a spoiled dog. Odie is a family member in the home. Odie mingles with everyone, including my one-and-a-half-year-old daughter, with no problem at all. We have never seen any aggressive behavior from Odie, even when a small kitten was in the home. Odie is by no means a vicious animal. Please return this dog to his loving family. Also, please give the Kelderman's time to make any accommodations to get Odie home. Sincerely, David Blaze, Cheryl Blaze, and Melanie McGee."
Okay, does the council have any questions for Mrs. Kelderman that they'd like to ask?
I have a couple of questions. One is kind of on topic, but not on topic. Did you happen to pay for the medical bills for the neighbor?
We did offer to pay for the medical bills. She said that there would be none, because she was on government pay, or government insurance.
The second question would be, from the time of the incident when the daughter got bit of the neighbor, what have you guys done to ensure that that's not going to happen? Or did you start making a plan after the police said the investigation is over, and here's what we came up with?
Well, I began training him at home. I did get in contact with several, like I said, several other dog trainers as well, which is how I ended up with Ms. Childs at Dingo.
Thank you.
We ensured, of course, that Odie did not, my son did not take out Odie. We were the ones who took him out, took him out on a leash every time we took him out.
I think it's really cool that you trained the dog to sit and everything else, but you wasn't able to train the dog when it attacked the neighbor, and the neighbor was just taking the garbage out. That's a concern for me that...
So I have a question. So from September, when the incident happened, where your dog ran at the neighbor and tore the sweater, what was put in place...
I'm sorry.
You're fine. ...to March? Sorry, I know you said you put a stronger pulley system in. What else did you do?
Besides, that's actually when I began training, trying to train the dog to obey, because up to that point, he was actually fairly young, and I was told that I shouldn't be training dogs that young at the time still. I remember it was, but that was when I had to, my, trying to train him.
Okay. So I'm also going to express some concern. So I read Officer Williams' report, and he had identified that the pulley or the chain was rusted. And so I guess my question is, if a new pulley, or you call it a pulley system, I'm guessing it's the lead?
The top is the pulley system.[1729.74] What he was referring to was the, the cable that came to the...
Okay. So how often do you check that then?
I have not had it checked since the wintertime, no.
Okay. I would also ask, what's the weight limit of that pulley system?
I don't remember off the top of my head what it is. But we try to stay above, he is 85 pounds.
So another comment I want to say too is in Officer Williams' report too, it does talk about how when Officer Williams came into the home, I think Odie was kennelled at the time, but he did growl, or maybe when, maybe he was taken out of the kennel when he growled and I'm looking for it in the report, I apologize. But he had some defensive techniques and maneuvers too, or I guess maybe aggressive techniques and maneuvers also. So I think the, he sniffed while in the kennel and when he came out, you had to pull him back into the kennel too because of some of the aggressive behaviors that were displayed.
Yeah. And when anybody comes into the house, we always put Odie into a kennel. So when we saw Officer come up to the door, I put him in the kennel, which took us a little bit of time to do that. He barked, he does bark every time somebody comes in. I'm not going to lie to you, I was a bit stressed when Officer Williams came into my household. And my dog did come, I tried to get him out for a little bit to have him be able to see that, and he did bark at Officer Williams.
And I imagine that was a stressful situation. I guess my other concern too is, so we had to have a child get bit for these multiple times, I think. I think there's an injury to the side and to the hand too, that multiple stitches were required. And so a child was injured, which we knew that there were concerns with aggression or for these to be put into, these action items to be put into place. And that does concern me, especially with the school behind too. If he were to break the, the run or get loose again and see someone back there too, because kids are running around playgrounds. And I think that was noted too, you know, the, the kid ran and so the dog went after the child while running. Well, we...
She didn't, she screamed and so the...
Or maybe it was screamed, so.
She screamed and she did, and so he did go over towards, towards her, yes.
So screaming, so we know on playgrounds, kids scream and play and that kind of stuff too. So that is a pretty significant concern to me. That's all I have.
Does council have any other questions? Mrs. Kelderman, do you have anybody that you would like to have speak on your behalf? I think we have one other person here that wanted to speak, perhaps on your behalf.
I think so, yes.
Would that person please come to the microphone and identify yourself and give your address, please?
Anybody who filled out a sheet, right?
Pardon?
Anybody who filled out the sheet.
Jesse? So please give us your name and your address.
Yours.
You need to get kind of close to the microphone so everybody can hear.
Sorry, there are several of these in here.
I, Jesse Gobronson, do swear on the, forgive me for my informality, I'm not really familiar with these types of things. I, Jesse Gobronson, do swear on the goodness of the dog Odie, who is owned by one Alex Renenberg, Wyatt Kelderman, and Mrs. and Mr. and Mrs. Kelderman. I know Odie from my end, Alex's Dungeon and Dragon play sessions, and I can attest that although hesitant to strangers and just a bit quick to bark, Odie is nonetheless a good boy. It is my belief and experience that the dog in question possesses in him so much love, excitement, and energy that it is only natural that he gives the occasional bark and jump at the new person to love's presence. And I posit that if given a few minutes to know this good boy, anyone could see just how good a boy this good boy is. In my experience, he is exceptionally well-trained, joyously lovable, and deserving of all the pets and belly rubs in the world. I see absolutely no reason why he should, he should be put down for if he is, I will be mourning the loss of this family member alongside this family. Sincerely, Jesse Gobronson.
Thank you. At this point, I'm going to ask if the city staff wants to make any rebuttal or clarify statements made by the appellant. Okay.
I guess my concern is, have you spoken with the neighbor, the young lady that was bitten? Because I think it has to be some kind of mental trauma, being bit by a dog. So in that aspect, I believe she needs a little bit more assistance than just the physical.
Is there anybody else that wants to speak on behalf of Mrs. Kelderman before I move to the other family? Yes. You need to come up to the microphone, please, and identify yourself and your address.
This is the most intimidated I've ever been in my life. Before I start, I do know that there were a couple of people that had written, like, filled out the forms, just, I turned mine in, but I think it was after the city clerk had come to get them. Is it too late to have those out, like, up as well?
So there's more forms in there?
Yes.
What's your name?
Oh, right. So sorry. My name is Alexander Renenberg. I'm the son of Yedira and Casey Kelderman.
Go ahead and go. You can go ahead and talk.
Before we begin, I do apologize for any awkwardness that I have. This is the first time I've ever done this in my life.
You're doing fine.
Oh, that's a, that's a relief. So we got Odie when I was, I believe about in my freshman year of high school. And around that time, I got into a, essentially a tabletop role-playing game called Dungeons and Dragons. Being a social butterfly, I invited a lot of people over. Over the years, I've had, I can't, I can't name an exact number, but I've had a lot of my friends come over repeatedly, generally every two-ish weeks, every week or two weeks. And during those times, I can say that while Odie most definitely barked, he's a very loud guy, he, he never bit anyone. Mom and dad would hold him by his leash. They would slowly introduce new people to him. And after he got used to there being a stranger in his home and he, then he would, he would just calm down essentially. He might still bark if we were to get rowdy. A lot of us were really into the role-play aspect, so we, you know, we would shout at each other. There was one instance where one of my friends had actually grabbed another friend by the shirt as part of our session. And while he would bark at displays of aggression or anger, he never bit. He might come over to sniff, but that was it. During those years, I can say from firsthand experience that my parents have been strict with his training in the sense that it was important that we get him on the run, it's important that we give him treats when he behaves, it's important that we know to put him in the kennel if he's being aggressive or rowdy, or if someone just wants him in the kennel, or if they're uncomfortable with him. And I think that, so sorry. I think that, what was that? Yeah, thank you very much. I think that before he is ordered to be taken away or put down in the event that we have nobody to take him, there should be given the chance for my mom and dad to get him real and professional training. I think that's it.
Thank you.
Do I stay up here or do I get to go back?
No, you can sit down.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. It looks like we have four more individuals that wanted to speak on behalf of the Kelderman's. So would you like to come up one at a time? Larry, would you, there's another one that's been put in there. Would you bring it up, please? And give us your name and your address, please.
I'm Whitney Van Busker, and 1841 Albia Road.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I'm here to talk on behalf of the Kelderman family and Odie. So I wrote a letter of recommendation for the family because I've been friends with them for about seven years now. And my son actually was babysat on Fridays because we had preschool and they don't have school in preschool, or they don't have school on Fridays at preschool. So her daughter actually would watch my son from the age three to four, so he's in three to four-year-old preschool, and never once did I ever have to worry about my son or the fact that the dog would ever hurt my son. Yeah, he barked every time that we dropped him off in the morning, but he's a big dog and he's got a big voice. And I mean, and my son's got an even bigger voice, trust me. And my son loved to play and my son would romp around and Odie would just follow him everywhere. And I included some pictures. I don't know if you guys seen them, but it was my son laying on the couch with Odie, taking a nap very closely. And not once did I worry about him. So I really hope that you guys reconsider the fact that he is not a vicious dog. He comes from a wonderful, loving home that would do anything to bring him home. That's all.
Thank you. Next, we have, I believe, Crystal Bell Renenberg. I'm sorry, I hope I'm not destroying everybody's names.
No, you're fine. My name's Crystal Bell Renenberg. I currently live at 255 Kirkwood Court, Southwest Apartment 6 in Cedar Rapids. I have been with Odie ever since, basically, essentially it was my senior year of high school up until about the time that I moved in 2020 for college. Odie has, he is a big dog, but he's very lovable. He's always, I've never had any issues or had any fears of him biting anyone. And like Whitney had says, I would babysit her son on Fridays. We would always play on the coffee table. We would always watch movies and play with Play-Doh and everything. And not once have I ever had to put Odie in the kennel in fear of Grayson's life or anything of that sort. We've also had many, many family gatherings and we've had birthday parties and we've had my brother's D and D sessions. And we've even had my sister-in-law's, one and a half, actually about two-year-old daughter now around Odie. And he never showed any aggressive behavior. He sniffed, he maybe barked a little bit, but overall, he, there was no sign of aggression towards her at all. And I know that my in-laws feel the very same way, that Odie is a very well-behaved dog and they have no concerns or any of that such. He's essentially what they call the big baby. And I know how much he means to our family because he is more than just a dog. He is our family. And I know my parents will do everything that they can to bring him home.
You have anything else you'd like to say? Okay. Thank you very much. Next is Alexander Renenberg.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Is it a Ronaldo?
Give us your name and your address, please.
Yeah, my name is Ronaldo Roival. My address is 2604 Maryland Road. What I want to say is only is, I want a place for Odie because he's a good dog and most of all is, is a good therapy for my daughter and my grandkids. My daughter is Yedira and my grandkids, they, my grandkid, the, the young, the young man that escaped the dog, that day that happened, I have him in my house weekends and he's, I saw him very, very guilty, feel guilty of what's happened now. And you say he's, he doesn't feel very, very good. So my daughter too is, that dog is like a therapy for her and for my grandson, my son-in-law, Casey. So basically, they are very taking care about the dog. That happened, that day, what happened, it was a terrible accident. But she's taking, she want to take care about it and make what she need to do in order to not, that never happen again. That's it.
Thank you very much. Before we move to the other family, is there anybody else that wants to speak on behalf of the Kelderman's? If not, we're going to go ahead and hear from the Flugee family. And Cindy, we'll let you go first.
I'm the neighbor.
So your name and your address.
Sandy Flugee, 1529 North Court Street. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for allowing me to have the opportunity to speak on this issue. On the evening of March 23rd, 2022, Casey and Yedira Kelderman's dog got loose and attacked my daughter while she was taking out the garbage on my property, requiring nine stitches on her hand and hip, which was caused, which has caused her to be very traumatized. There have been prior incidents, one of which the dog attacked me on my deck and the dog ripped my sweatshirt and left marks on me. At that time, I did not involve the police, but did make Casey aware of the incident. There have been multiple other occasions where the dog has broken off its chain. The Kelderman's and I have always had a good neighborly relationship and hope that this unfortunate event does not change that. My concern, however, that it is the combination of the multiple incidences of the dog getting loose, the police deeming the dog vicious, and the location of our properties being next to the school and having countless kids walking back and forth to school on a daily basis that, that doing anything short of removing the dog from the city puts the odds of this type of incident happening again to my family or the kids at the school. I realize installing a fence could be a deterrent. However, gates could be accidentally left open just as easy as dogs getting off their leash. And I think this particular history of this dog's aggressive nature, that a fence should not even be considered at this point. I myself am a dog owner, but I do not feel that keeping an aggressive pet is ever worth the chance of an injury to a human. To reiterate what I have said tonight, please, I ask that the council, at the very least, remove the dog from the city limits to avoid anyone else in the community being seriously injured. I have some pictures if I could show you, please. Can I bring them up?
I think we've already seen these. Well, they're, they're, they're different, but yeah. Pass them down and then we'll pass them back this way.
That is on your head.
Okay, it's just a different angle.
Thank you. Next, we'll go ahead and hear from Cindy Flugee.
Hi, I'm Cindy Flugee, 6653 189th Street in Albia. And I happen to be Sandy's mom and Derby Van Wy's grandmother. I'm also a licensed social worker for the Central School District. Sandy called us after this happened and I told her if she didn't go to school the next day to let me know because I would come down, because I know Derby well enough to know that she has some anxiety issues and that she would be terribly traumatized. Because Derby has been scared of this dog since they moved there. Quite honestly, I'm scared of the dog. All of us are scared of the dog because every time we pull up to Sandy... Quite honestly, I'm scared of the dog. All of us are scared of the dog because every time we pull up to Sandy's house, this dog, if it's outside, goes bonkers, barking and pulling at its chain and just sounds like it wants to attack us. So when I heard that the dog attacked Derby, it didn't surprise me at all. I went the next morning to be with Derby and she was extremely traumatized, as you can imagine. And she sat close to me the whole day or held hands with me. She wouldn't go outside. I had to take her dog out, which by the way, weighs four pounds. Tiny, tiny Yorkie. Derby just kept saying, Grandma, what's going to happen? The dog's over there. They didn't take the dog away. I can't go outside again. I'm not going outside. I'm not going outside this summer. And why doesn't somebody kill the dog? And she asked over and over and over that day for somebody to please kill that dog. Because she didn't know how she was going to handle going on if that dog was next door. Now, last fall, there was an article in the Otomo Courier about a little girl who was on the track team. And I don't know if any of you remember, but she had a pick line in her chest and was fed at night through the pick line because she had spent over a month in the summer at Cincinnati Children's Hospital in a very life and death situation, and we almost lost her. That was Derby. She's 14, but she weighs 70 pounds. She's tiny. But she is the toughest kid you will ever meet. We didn't want her, I didn't want her going out for track with a pick line, and she'd only been out of the hospital a few weeks, but she insisted. Now she's, well, that was cross-country. Now she started track with stitches in her side. And she said she was having a hard time running, Grandma, because my side hurts so bad when I run. But she did it anyway. Because that's Derby. And I think that when you look at the pictures and you realize what this dog did to her, and they can say this is a playful dog, but Sandy called me after it had broke the chain and come over to her deck and ripped up her new sweatshirt and scratched her up. And she was upset. And she was concerned about Derby's safety. Because Derby is tiny. And Derby told me that Mrs. Kelderman came out and got the dog away from her. But Mrs. Kelderman kept telling her to stop yelling. She was making it worse. So she said, quit screaming. Well, Derby said, what do you expect? The dog attacked me. I'm hurt and I'm screaming and I'm in pain. And then Mrs. Kelderman said, well, you shouldn't have stuck your hand out. And Derby said, I stuck my hand out because I was trying to protect my body. And that dog got her four inches from the biggest incision and surgery that you can believe that's on her body. And if those claws or that mouth had got that incision, we might have lost her. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Bob Flugie.
Bob Flugie, 6653 189th Street in Albion. Everybody seemed to pretty well sum everything up. I'm quite sure to that family and their friends is a friendly dog. But as Cindy said, it's pretty wild when we go there. And quite frankly, the dog bit Derby, cut her up pretty good. I'm glad it didn't get her face. And we've talked about it. I've talked about the fact that that dog, I'm not sure what I'd do if that dog came at me. But I do have concealed carry permit, and when I go down there, I bring it. If that means anything at all. But I won't talk much longer, but that dog bothered me. So, end of story.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to speak on behalf of the Flugie family? If not, I'm going to ask if the City Council has any additional questions they want to ask of city staff.
I don't have, oh, sorry. Go ahead, Chief.
Go ahead, please.
Nope, I was just going to have a comment.
I was just going to say, I don't have anything to rebut or clarify on anybody, what anything's been set up here at this point. But if you have any specific questions of me, I'd be willing to try to answer those. And maybe, I don't know if it is to a benefit to the council, you know, I can have empathy as the chief for both sides of this, obviously, and we try to address issues a lot of times where it doesn't come down to people being arrested, things being removed. People get citations. That's why we have discretion. Officer Williams and I discussed this incident. And we, Officer Williams chose to actually go to the victim's family and ask them some of this information, like putting a muzzle on it, getting the dog proper training prior to the order to remove that animal. And it was very adamant for the victim's family that that dog was removed. Therefore, that order was signed. So it wasn't taken lightly. None of these things are taken lightly by myself or my staff. We do try to think outside the box and see if we can come to an agreeable situation before things like orders have to be committed to. But in this situation, I felt that it was what needed to take place to rectify this situation.
So I have a clarifying question for you. So if, so as this dog is deemed vicious, if, what does that mean for, like, the dog is, just for the public's sake? So it's removed from the city limits, correct?
Correct.
Or is it put down? Can you clarify exactly what the next process would be if we were to vote?
At the time, the Keldermans received that letter, they have to remove the animal from the city limits. The animal has to remain outside the city limits until we go through this process of appeal for the city council. If the city council were to reverse my order, then Odie would be able to come back into the city immediately. If you stay my order, then Odie will have to find another place to live. It's not like the police department's going to go track down Odie and destroy him. That's not the purpose of the removal order.
I'd just like to make a comment. I appreciated everybody that came up and spoke and sympathize on both sides as far as that goes, but I think it really comes down to what the code says, and that's what we really need to go by in this situation.
I would just comment too, you know, tonight we heard a lot that Odie's not an aggressive dog. Odie wouldn't bite. Odie is playful. But Odie did bite and Odie did attack a child and the mother of the child a few, or went after the mother of the child a few months ago, too. So I think it just goes to speak that, yes, we know that animals may be, we may see a personality or a side of an animal, too. But in this instance, there was another side to that animal, too. And it did injure not only physically, but it sounds like emotionally and mentally also. Thank you.
And my only comment is, I plead with the parents on both sides. Get those children some professional help. Because trauma is trauma. Make sure they get some help and don't be left out in this process. Thank you.
Any other questions for city staff from council? Okay, I'm going to provide one more opportunity for the appellate to provide an opportunity for any rebuttal if they would like to. If you don't, that's fine, but I'll offer that to Mrs. Kelderman. Okay. And is there any other final comment that the Flugie family would like to make? Okay. I'll go ahead and entertain a motion then to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Deny the appeal of Casey and Yedira Kelderman. Recommendation, deny the appeal of Casey and Yedira Kelderman.
Do we have a motion to approve that recommendation?
So moved. Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Resolution number 121, 2022, adopting the updated policy statements governing the operation of the City of Atumwa's Downtown Area Revitalization Grant Programs. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 121, 2022.
Do we have a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Yeah. Zach, do you have any comment you want to make on this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The downtown revitalization grant programs have been a city program since at least 1996 with the Downtown Development Guide. And these policy statements are an update to those programs. It's going to preserve several of the programs as they are. That would include the Loan Interest Credit Program, which allows approved projects to buy down interest on construction loans up to 7.25% on a five-year loan for up to $7,500 of value. Also continue to be the Roof Replacement Grant Program, which pays 50% of the construction costs for roof replacement, up to $10,000. The Commercial Paint Program, which is 50%, up to $1,000 for approved paint projects. And the White Box Program, which covers rehabilitation distressed interior spaces, 50%, up to $10,000. The two significant changes that are in these policy statements are, one, creating a new restaurant equipment program. This is similar to a program in Newton, which provides up to $25,000 to reimburse the cost of installing semi-permanent restaurant equipment, such as vent hoods, restaurant fire suppression systems, and grease interceptors. And the second change is increasing the award for this facade program. Since the 90s, the facade program has been 25% up to $10,000. But the costs for these facade projects have gone up significantly since then. And this would be a maximum award of up to 25, or 25% up to $20,000, so doubling the total award. The remaining projects, after we've done quite a few facades downtown, are the ones that are the most difficult and have the highest need. So along with the increased cost, there's a good, there's that justification as well for that. These are programs that are available throughout the entire downtown development district, which is, also includes Church Street all the way to the five corners.
Does council have any questions for Zach? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Ordinance number 3191, 2022, amending the subdivision code to promote and simplify the development of new housing by amending sections 33101, 33106, and 33108 of the Municipal Code of the City of Atumwa, Waplo County, Iowa. Recommendation, pass third consideration and adopt ordinance number 3191, 2022.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Zach, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Thank you, Mayor. I think we've covered every ordinance of the previous two considerations, but I can answer any questions the council has.
I don't believe anybody has questions, so we'll go ahead and Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Ordinance number 3192, 2022, amending the zoning code to promote and simplify the development of new housing by amending sections of the Municipal Code of the City of Atumwa, Waplo County, Iowa. Recommendation, pass third consideration and adopt ordinance number 3192, 2022.
Move the recommendation as presented. Second.
Zach, I believe you're taking this one again.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this one's had two previous considerations. I don't have anything to add, but I can answer questions.
Does council have any questions for Zach? Hearing none. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Ordinance number 3193, 2022, granting to ITC Midwest LLC its successors and assigns the right and non-exclusive franchise to acquire, construct, erect, maintain, and operate in the City of Atumwa, Iowa, an electric transmission system for a period of 25 years. Recommendation, pass third consideration and adopt ordinance number 3193, 2022.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
And Larry Seals, our Public Works Director, is going to talk on this topic.
Well, it's the third reading. I really don't have any additional information unless there's specific questions.
Anybody have questions for Larry? Okay, then Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Resolution number 3190, excuse me, ordinance number 3194, 2022, establishing a one-year moratorium on the issuance of certificates of zoning compliance for new applications for used motor vehicle dealer lots and new applications for dealer extension lots. Recommendation, pass third consideration and adopt ordinance number 3194, 2022.
Move the recommendation as presented. Second.
Zach, I believe you have this one.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Also, the third consideration here, we've covered the ordinance. It does establish a moratorium on used car lots, and it would be in effect immediately after publication.
Any questions for Zach? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Ordinance number 3198, 2022, proposed ordinance to repeal and replace Chapter 7, Animals and Fowl of the City of Atumwa Municipal Code. Recommendation, pass first consideration of ordinance number 3198, 2022.
Move the recommendation as presented. Second.
I believe Phil, you're going to present on this.
Sure. Thank you, Honorable Mayor. November 16th, 2021, the City Council officially received a petition to end the ban on pit bulls in Atumwa, Iowa. On January 18th of this year, City Council had a public hearing to gather input from the community at large regarding potential revision to the ordinance as requested by that petition. Since that meeting, staff and council members have continued to receive input and feedback from the community and the coalition. On February 1st of this year, the City Council authorized the city attorney, along with consultation of city staff, prepare a revised ordinance inclusive of broader animal issues within the city. Stemming from the original January 18th meeting and the duration of staff review, there was a consistent theme regarding animal care and enforcement of the code in general. The revised code identifies a number of minor revisions, such as definitions and clarifying language, to assist in enforcement of the code. Additionally, there was a revised classification of animal from potentially dangerous to high risk. Finally, language was added to incorporate procedural and appeal processes, as well as language exempting service animals from some aspects of the code. The other aspect of the code which prompted the initial review was that petition related to removing language in the code specifically defines the pit bull terrier as a dangerous animal by breed, in addition to other animal classifications, actions of animals, and the history of animal actions as a dangerous animal. Pit bulls have been included in the definition of dangerous animals since the 1980s. Based upon a review of the comments from the public, other independent research, it is my opinion that insufficient evidence exists to reverse the ban at this time. While the code has been revised to incorporate definitions and process related to vicious, high-risk, and dangerous dogs, it does not remove the pit bull terrier from the definition of a dangerous animal. There are, if there's any questions about other aspects of the code, I can be happy to address those. Some of the things that, like I said, there are minor revisions in many areas, especially with definitions, adding some definitions, some language, adding process and procedure to areas. The major revision to this would be that Article 4, where it used to be dangerous animals, and moving that to animal control. That identifies aspects of this related to vicious animals, was moved from a prior part of the code into this section and how those are to be treated. Also then, adding in the new definition of high-risk animals and qualifications for the ability to keep an animal classified as high-risk. And then finally, clarifying or redrafting some of the respect to the code on dangerous animals. So that whole section has been redone and then added some language in the enforcement section. in the enforcement section of the ordinance as well. Specifically, just clarifying, classifying some of the ability of the community service officer with authority to go conduct investigations, having the duty to investigate incidents as they are reported, but then also providing for the ability to enter property as stated within the code there. So this was in order, in action to repeal the prior code and replace it with the new code that was drafted and presented to the City Council.
Does council have any questions for Phil?
Yes, I do. So first off, I would like to, I guess this is more of a comment. I would like to say that I do like that we've expanded the definition of what abandoned means. And I like that we put a little bit more qualification in that also. I also like that we added the irresponsible animal owner to the section. I know these aren't questions, but I will get to my questions. I do like that we added that and we defined that, too. I think that was really important and something lacking from our last ordinance. So the definition of pit bull terrier, I do have a question, and maybe this was in our last ordinance, and it still causes me pause. It says, it gives the definition, it talks about a pit bull, Staffordshire bull terrier, American Stafford, all that stuff, but it also says, "or a dog which has the appearance and characteristics of being an animal," or an American pit bull terrier. That causes me pause because I think that, yeah, and I think that, as she said, guilt bias association, too, but I think that, like boxers have some of that identification as pit bulls, too. So that causes me pause. I would like to strike that from the pit bull terrier, and maybe Officer Williams, or Chief Farrington, or Administrator Rath can give more definition to that or background to that before I continue.
So that definition was left intact from the prior code. That had not been revised as part of that definition.
Okay, I would still like to strike that.
Which aspect was it?
It's about, it says right after, oh, it's four sentences up from the bottom of the definition. It says, "a dog which has the appearance and characteristics of being an American pit bull terrier." So I guess, I don't have page numbers.
It's definitely.
Oh, it's the definition of pit bull.
Okay.
Yeah. And I guess, again, I go back to that, too, unless we're going to identify what those characteristics are.
So from that section, "or a dog which has," to the end of that, okay.
Yep. I would like to strike that. And I don't know, I guess I'm new to this process. Do you want me to continue, or how does this work?
Well, I suppose from talking about potential amendments, take them one by one, and see if the council agrees or disagrees with the requested amendment.
Can you stay in the microphone? I'm sorry, I cannot hear you very well.
If there are amendments, the city staff and legal council probably want the opportunity to review those, since this is the first reading of the ordinance. That is in.
The ordinance that has been presented to council at present, and so any of those amendments may need to be woven into a subsequent draft and presented again for first consideration. So we don't need to vote right now on it?
Well, if you want to make the amendments, I think you would vote on the amendments, but then you would not vote on the ordinance itself tonight.
Correct. We would not pass the first reading.
Correct.
Okay. So do you want me to keep, then I'll continue, right? Okay.
Yeah, I guess you could go amendment by amendment, or you could do all of the amendments and then try to pass them, but if council agrees with one of the amendments but not others, there'd be issues. So I'd say, maybe if this is your first amendment, make a motion. If there's a second.
I make a motion to strike a dog which has the appearance and characteristics of being an American pit bull terrier, Staffordshire, thank you, bull terrier, American Staffordshire bull terrier breeder, out.
Is there a second to Councilwoman, her recommendation?
Point of clarification on the spirit of what that means. I guess, I guess that confuses me just a little bit as well, because I would make the assumption, if I'm reading that, that, and please, anybody correct me if I'm wrong, that a purebred pit bull, a purebred Staffordshire terrier, a purebred, whatever else is listed, and then when I look at the characteristics of pit bull, that would tend to mean a crossbreed to me.
Well, I didn't go to the mixed breed part, you know, the mixed breed of the dog. I guess if you want, if we want to clarify what those characteristics are, I, again, I go back to like a boxer that has a lot of the characteristics.
I don't disagree with the confusion of it. I'm just wondering what the spirit of it was when it was originally passed.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, obviously, I wasn't here when that was really drafted. It was 20 to 40 years ago, depending on when this particular aspect was put in. My assumption, though, would be from an enforcement standpoint, unless you knew the breed of the animal, how would you enforce that? You know, some of it has to be based off of appearance to make that indication initially, at least. Now, it could be verified, or, you know, incorrect or correct, but you'd have to have something go off of, from the first instance. And I think that's where that appearance or characteristics aspect would come from.
And I see the chief of police and Officer Williams shaking.
A Yorkshire, there's no characteristics that are whatsoever reference of pit bull, and I think that is the spirit of the code when they wrote that, if that makes sense.
I guess that makes better sense than just kind of how it's written, because when I read this, I read that, oh, well, you know, any dog that has those characteristics could be, technically fall under this pit bull terrier.
I got you.
And that is part of what was in the revised code as far as allowing for a process and procedure, so that if a dog was identified as a, to be a pit bull terrier, and was deemed to be dangerous dog, that would notice be given, as we saw tonight, on the vicious dog side, an appeal could be made. There's process procedure allowed with that to counter that, provide evidence as to why it's not that breed.
Okay. Well, I guess with that definition and that clarification, I guess I would strike my motion.
Rescind, rescind your motion?
Yeah, thank you.
Nobody seconded, correct?
No.
Correct.
Yeah. Phil, then I, or Administrator Rath, I also, on the next, in Section 74, we start to talk about tethering of an animal, but we don't, and I know that there's another section, I think it's 743, that talks about tethering expectations, like blank the tether. But I guess my question is, or I would like to talk more about why we don't put a specific, like, amount of time on tethering. Oftentimes, we will see animals out that are tethered 24/7. So I would just offer some, ask you why we wouldn't, that was something I had talked with you prior, and just asking why we didn't clarify a specific time. For example, a lot of other ordinances say up to nine hours in a 24-hour span.
Right. So my, and that would be going, in my opinion, back to enforcement? And so if you were there and to say, let's say we put 12 hours on there as a instance, how does the officer coming up on the scene know that the animal was out there for 12 hours or 12 minutes? Say somebody goes to 11 hours and 59 minutes, brings the dog in, brings it back out a minute later. It's kind of similar to when you have parking enforcement, and you chalk the tires, and then the vehicle moves a spot over.
Well, that wouldn't qualify, because in, if it's only 12 hours and 24, like 12 hours and a 24-hour span, you'd have to wait 12 more hours. I mean, right?
But I also. Only if you had those provisions in there that said you can only be out there 12 hours within a 24-hour period, but then again, who's out there? We don't have enough resources to have someone monitoring an animal, one animal, that, you know, to do, right? So offering some other qualifiers in there, some of the discretion of the community service officer, for example, there was things in there as far as in excess of excrement, unsafe conditions, other things that allow the community service officer to offer some discretion in being able to determine, does the animal look like they're treated properly or not? Is there adequate food, water, shelter, accessible? You know, those things are in there as far as making that kind of discretion to make sure that the welfare of the animal is being maintained. And that's why not having some specifics. The more specific you get, sometimes it actually becomes more difficult to enforce, or to at least, from a legal standpoint, it makes it easier to challenge in court, saying, well, no, you don't know that it was 12 hours. Here, I'm showing, you know, I've got my Ring camera or whatever that shows I had him out there then, and I brought it in, and we don't have anything to refute that. So that's, my experience, what I would say.
Okay. And Section 725, we talk about, like, if an animal is impounded, and throughout that section, it has the male identifier. Do, can we change that to just gender-neutral identifier, because women may do this also, or?
Yes, so I'd have to verify if our code has gender-neutral language, but otherwise, we could put that in the code here and make that as a, I don't know, that may be a minor enough amendment to still approve, or?
Pretty specific as to which section you're talking about, and then what the specific wording might be. So is it just as to the entire entirety of the new ordinance, the he/she modifier should be?
Yeah, it's the only section that actually does that, so. And it might, it might sound nitpicky. I'm not trying to be, I'm just trying to, I don't want to have to continue to come back to this, so.
Yep. Okay. That was 7-25.
Yep. And then I guess I have just a general question. If an animal is found out large and impounded, and if we are able to identify the owner, and the owner comes and picks him up, it talks about fees for the owner, that prior to the owner taking ownership again, that they have to pay some fees. However, we don't identify that if we know the owner and the owner decides not to pick their pet up, are they responsible, or could we put in the code that they become responsible for the fees, the fees that the shelter, wherever the animal, the city has to pay? So if we have like a license or a chip that identifies that owner, I think that a responsible owner, whether they pick up their dog or not, I guess that wouldn't be responsible, but they should have to pay those fees, and we could send them a bill.
And that may be more of a legal question, property rights. At what point does the animal relinquish? Does it still ownership of the property of the owner or not?
Correct. So this would be the kind of concern that, again, legal counsel would want to look into that question before we can offer advice, just because there are property-related questions that come up.
Okay, could we do that, please? Thank you. Okay, and then in Seven, Section 7-42, in Number 4, it talks about what a high-risk animal owner must do, like, there's multiple steps. We talk about the owner having to have insurance, and then all these other steps, which I think is great that we lined it, laid it out. And maybe this is a question for legal, too, but if the owner is living, or if the owner of the animal is living in a rental property, and they have a high-risk animal, I think that it would be appropriate to have to have a letter issued from the property owner, the landlord, stating that it's okay to have a high-risk animal there. There is some case law that identifies that if a dog were to attack on rental property, that they, that the landlord is actually, could be liable for that.
But also with that piece, landlords have to pay a higher insurance on their property if they have dogs that are high-risk.
Yeah, so I would like to see, so some kind of, something from the landlord identifying that it's okay to. And then that kind, that also gives the landlord the knowledge that there is potentially a high-risk animal living in their home.
Sorry, what was the last section that you had?
7-42, and it's number.
Before that.
Oh.
Were you talking about the gender-specific language?
No.
No, it's in the impairment section. I have to find it now.
Okay. Well, if we're going to make these amendments, you can get that to me. I just want to make sure we incorporate the questions you have.
Yeah. 726, or no, that's infected animals. Yeah, I'll get it to you.
Thank you.
Okay, and then we talk about fees. However, we have like identified, like, first offenses at like $100. So for example, on Section 744, Number 8, says a violation of this section is a simple misdemeanor resulting in a minimum fee of $100. So does that mean, and this one is, this section is just keeping dangerous animals prohibited, exceptions and regulations. That's the section. So when we say a minimum fee, do we have a sliding fee scale to increase that, like first offense 100, second offense 250, third offense 500? I guess I ask that just because, I mean, I know $100 is a lot to some people, but if we're continuing, if they continue to do it, do we have a stair step or process involved? And I think there may be other code sections. I just didn't see them on here.
Yeah, I think the ones that refer to a specific, simple misdemeanor and minimum fines were all at that, started at the minimum of the 100. I don't know, as far as from enforcement, is it escalator, or is there discretion?
Okay.
So maybe put a range in there?
Open is more discretion than, and then if, so, yeah, the mayor asked about the possibility of a range, and I was just going to say that having that discretion in there, someone that has a multiple offender, or I think to Councilwoman Galloway's point, one offense, you know, there's something, but if it's a multiple, you know, is there an escalator saying that, hey, you're continuing to do this, you're not learning anything from it, you know, and trying to increase that? So there's, there's something to that. And courts may or may not like that, and may throw everything back to having paid one, but we'll leave that to the courts to decide, I guess.
Okay. And then also, we talk about code section, or Section 7-47, irresponsible animal owners. We don't have a fine associated with that identified in here. I understand that if there's three or more violations, that you will get, you'll no longer be able to, three or more violations in a year, excuse me, you'll no longer be able to own an animal in city limits. However, I would like to see some monetary fine associated with this section, too.
Yeah, so I suppose where that would maybe play in, I think it's 7-47, is if somebody was an irresponsible owner and tried to have a pet despite that, maybe you'd find them for that aspect, breaking the irresponsible pet owner part, but anything else that they got to that point could be its own separate violation.
Yeah, and that's clear, point of clarification. That's it. Yes, that's what I was asking. So I guess I would motion that we associate a fine to trying, owning a pet after being deemed an irresponsible animal owner.
So just out of curiosity, and I'm, it sounds like there's more here that we really just can't take action on tonight. Is it possible to come, to table this and bring it back at a later point with some of these changes in there, as opposed to making 37 votes on, on different amendments, than to bring it back and then have to do this whole process over again, and instead just come in clean one time?
Question is to have staff and legal counsel further look into some of the issues raised by Councilwoman. raised by, um, Councilmember Galloway's comments, then that would be the direction that staff and legal counsel will go and then you'll be presented with an ordinance that's clean, um, different from what you have now in front of you and you would then proceed with, um, a public hearing and, and first reading on that version of the ordinance. However, if council's direction is not to attend to those comments, then, then the first reading of this ordinance before you would be on the table.
Okay, then I guess, um, if nobody's going to second-
Yeah, go ahead, because I, I guess I have some more comments on this and I don't want to table it if we're gonna-
Okay, go ahead, finish your comments.
Well, I think that we, I think, and maybe, correct me, um, if we have more comments or que- corrections, would we go all through them now and then discuss them or, or just keep?
Uh, that's up to you, um, I, I think if, if you want to have that discussion now or if you want to provide comments to staff and, and, and staff can take a look and try to, uh, address those items and, and present you with a revised ordinance, we can do it that way too, but, um, that would be up to the discretion of the mayor and council.
So what does the council want to do?
I would, I would make a motion that we table this and allow Councilmember Galloway to turn in her notes to count, to staff and to legal so that they can better, uh, adjust this and bring back a cleaner, more, more detailed plan for us.
I'd second that.
And I, okay.
You can still talk.
Yeah, I would like to clarify, I, did I identify that, I, yeah, I did try to, but I was told that I needed to do it up here, so I just want to make that-
And, and I'll, I'll go back to Councilmember Rose's statement when this all started before any of us were on this, uh, diocese, that this ordinance needs to be done this way, this time, the right way. So if anybody has any comments, we need to get them turned into staff and, and to legal and we need this presented one time, the way we need it, the way, that it's correct, so we're doing this the correct way and that we don't have to come back in five years and redo this all again.
And I, I, just if I may, I do think it makes sense to, to, um, discuss the areas that council would like to see a revised ordinance address. That way, we're all clear on what needs to be done.
I don't necessarily agree with anything that, that Councilperson Galloway has said, um, but I, like I said, I just don't want to go through the, the, the hassle and, and waste the public's time of going through this one by one by one when we can just bring back a clean version that everybody might agree with or not agree with, whatever the case may be, and then we can have public comment at that time. I agree.
So we have a motion and a second to table and bring this back. Is that correct?
Yes.
Well, I, I guess before we take a vote on it, I'd like to know if, uh, we had several people that did want to talk tonight and, uh, I guess I want to still afford them the opportunity to speak tonight if they want to or come back to the next council meeting when we have a revised copy with all these changes that people want to have made on the council. So I guess I'd like to know if people still would like to speak tonight, if you can, if you want to, I'm gonna allow you to do that. If you don't want to, uh, we can just wait and have public comment, uh, when we bring the revised ordinance back again to the council. We had several people that wanted to speak, I suppose some are for and some are against, I can't tell from the sheets what their perspective is, but do people want to go ahead and talk? You have three minutes to talk if you want to talk. I can just call the names and you can just come up. Kathy Caldwell. Go ahead and, and give your name and your address, please.
My name is Kathy Caldwell, I live at fifteen ten Greenwood Drive. Thank you for the opportunity to do this tonight. Um, I am a new spokesperson for the Coalition. Marcia has stepped down to, uh, health reasons and because of the negative atmosphere that has been created. Let me assure you that we look forward to an amiable working relationship with the council in order to make our community safe for everyone while removing the breed-specific language in chapter seven. By relying on the facts, we can work together with respect to both sides of the issue and find a solution that serves the community as we strive to move forward and see Atama grow to its full potential. Despite the clear failure of the current ban, we continue spending money on locating, citing, seizing, housing, and ultimately using the nice dogs who have done nothing wrong but be born a hated breed or, as stated, crossbreeds with similar characteristics. At what cost have we as a community sent dogs to their death in the last twenty years? Not because they had attacked anyone, but simply because they were the wrong breed. In two thousand and sixteen, Officer Williams spoke to the Courier regarding the BSL of chapter seven, and I quote, "Genetics are a big part of it." Williams continued to say that whenever he hears someone say, "My dog hasn't hurt anyone," in his mind, he adds the word "yet." I would like to know if Officer Williams shares the same prejudice about other large breeds such as German Shepherds, Rottweilers, Doberman Pinschers, Huskies, et cetera. According to Williams, there is a test that local vets can order that he will accept as proof when determining the dog's breed. An owner's reporting of the breed or mix isn't enough for his satisfaction. I see no evidence that Officer Williams has reversed his stance, so surely then the council and animal control is able to show us that they hold themselves to the same standard, that each dog in question is tested before being found guilty and that the city does not rely simply on the visual identification of a dog based on similar characteristics. Criminal law states that the burden of guilt is on the prosecution, that guilt must be proven beyond a shadow of a doubt. Visual determination, similar characteristics, amber-colored eyes are not enough to satisfy that burden. It can only be satisfied by a DNA test, which would then be at the cost of the city. We want to make sure that as citizens, we do everything we can to ensure the safety of our community, including anti-tethering laws, animal safety education, community outreach programs, promote, promoting vet checks, dog licensing, dog training, spaying and neutering incentives, et cetera. We are in the process of finding funding for these services in our community, not just for pit bulls, but for all animals. We respectfully acknowledge the size and power of these dogs and as responsible pet owners, we are open to insurance requirements for large breed dogs and other suggestions that could help reassure the public's safety and ensure the end of animal cruelty in our community. Many of our suggestions would actually bring in more revenue to the city and local businesses as well as open much-needed community resources for other areas. We don't intend on walking away after the removal of this language to just let the chips fall where they may. We want to work with professionals towards clear goals that we know will make our community safer and stronger, ending animal cruelty and irresponsible pet ownership.
Thank you. Shannon Murphy.
She's taller. Um, I'm Shannon Murphy, I live at eleven thirty-one Monroe. Uh, Kathy and I have kind of stepped up to fill Marcia's shoes as much as we can try. Um, the mayor, Mark Row and Chief Farrington, I'll have my phone number if anybody wants it, I did not get you an email sent, Your Honor, I'm sorry. Um, I, we want the community to be safe. Unfortunately, tonight, we saw, you know, what was alleged to be a good dog, a bad situation. I don't want to see any child or adult hurt, it's just horrible, it breaks my heart. I told you all I've been bitten as a child, my son was bit. I also told the mayor last week when I called that under the, the way I feel like it is under the current ordinance, I can take a Chihuahua puppy and dock its ears in his tails and it has pit bull characteristics and that's also not okay. I don't like visual identification because there are many, many dogs that I know have pit bull in them that don't look like pit bulls and so they're safe and that's not okay. Um, I, Melissa Childs is here, she's gonna speak, um, she's willing to do public education classes, we want to help that. We want to help with fundraising to help people that can't afford to have their dogs microchipped and fixed, microchipped and fixed. We want to help with public education class, I've told her, as long as it's not little kids that might pull on Gracie, you know, if she wants to use her for later for a class, I'm willing to make that happen. We want it to be about ethical and fair treatment for all dogs. And I kind of find it offensive that any dog and domestic animal is listed in the same category under our code as pumas, lions, tigers. I mean, it's just ludicrous and the whole city and the whole country is looking at us, you know, and I feel like how can we move forward as a c- community and as a city if we're constantly looking back to what happened a number of years ago? So, does anyone have any questions? You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, have a good night.
Inez Hill.
My name is Inez Hill and I live at one three nine three four sixty-fifth street in Atama and we have rental properties, I am a member of the Wapala County landlords in Atama. We have, our rental properties are in the city limits and we've had trouble with the insurance agents not wanting to insure our houses, our properties because of, um, animals that are dangerous and that included pit bulls, chows and other dangerous animals. So, we, we have trouble just getting insurance and if, if the insurance agent agrees to, to, um, cover, then it has to be at a higher premium, much higher premium and it's just kind of, uh, too high to pay. So I would like to see the ordinance that was put in place for the pit bulls to stay and to remain and probably, um, include other dangerous animals as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Larissa Dros.
Larissa Dros, twelve oh two J Street. Um, so I have kind of an anecdote for you. Um, I was walking down the street with my daughter the other day and a dog came running up on us, growling and baring its teeth and I turned around and I saw, "Oh, it's not a pit bull, we're okay, it can't bite us," because the city code says it's not a dangerous animal because it's not a pit bull. That kind of sounds a little bit irrational, um, because it kind of is. You can't determine what a dog is or isn't going to do based on what it looks like or what it may or may not have in it. There's schnauzers that have been DNA tested that look just like schnauzers that have pit bull in them, over fifty percent. So, I've reached out to, uh, Iowa State University students that are in vet school. They said that, um, breed assessment based on physical characteristics is not something they're teaching in school anymore. I'm not sure if it was anything that was ever taught, this is currently what's going on at Iowa State. So this isn't something that we're staying with the times on and we can't move forward as a community if we keep looking in the rearview mirror and focusing on the past. Um, as you've seen today, stuff can happen no matter what breed it is. Um, we're not keeping our community safe, we're keeping them conditionally safe, but it's an unrealistic safe. That's all I have for you.
Thank you. Melissa Childs.
Good evening, I'm Melissa Childs at Five Woodshire Drive. I'm also a dog trainer, more than ten years, um, certified by the Certification Council for Professional Dog Trainers. And what I'm here today to do is to tell you that the pit bull breed ban, any breed ban, is not going to keep our community safe. What you really need to understand first and foremost is that there's absolutely no way to definitively and consistently identify a dog's breed mix by sight. I know you've all seen the pit, pick the pit bull pictures that show look-alike breeds, breeds that are often confused with pit bulls, but to help you understand this even further, um, I've provided you with some pictures, you should have a copy of this already, with seven different dogs that are DNA test confirmed pit bull mixes. Yes, and all of their curly-coated, dapple-colored, long-eared glory, they are all banned according to our current breed ban as well as this draft law. Not only that, uh, but this draft says that these dogs, if they're found at large, may be shot on sight, um, and not, not any effort made whatsoever to capture them. If you think that the task of identifying and removing pit bull mixes from this community is a matter, is merely a matter of time and resources, you are sorely mistaken. I've heard your concern that if breed-specific language is removed, you would be held liable for any future pit bull attack that follows. However, I also want you to consider the liability that already exists in saying that all pit bull mixes are dangerous and the city is responsible for removing them, something that is entirely impossible to do. How much more liable then is the city if a pit bull does bite someone after we failed to enforce this ban? The truth is, whether you think pit bulls are kitten cuddlers or cold-blooded killers, this ban does not and will not keep them out of Atama, but it will keep them in hiding. It will keep them out of training classes, it will keep them from being properly socialized, it will prevent them from getting vaccines for diseases that can transmit to other dogs and to humans. These are the things that are going to keep our community safe and this ordinance is going to be what prevents that from happening. I'm asking you to do the right thing today, the safe thing for our community and draft a new policy that holds all dog owners responsible for their dog's behavior regardless of breed. If you'll give me the opportunity, I will even personally volunteer my time and work with city staff and share all that I've learned working with thousands of dogs, hundreds of aggression cases, to draft a law that really does make this happen. I know we can do better than this. One more thing I want you to understand, it's been said that there's not enough support for overturning this ban, if only you knew. For every one of us you see here, there are dozens more talking to us, saying that they're too afraid of losing their blocky-headed, strong-boned boxer, bulldog, even black lab mixes to stand before you here today, have to say their name and address and share their thoughts. If you really want to hear what this community thinks, then temporarily suspend the enforcement of this ban and give these people a chance safely to come and share their opinions as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Eileen Day.
I hate to say, this is Eileen Day, two twenty-eight West Manning Avenue. I hate to say I've never been to a city council meeting, I've lived here all my life, but thank you, I will, I watched, I read the paper and thank you to the council members and the mayor for the time you spend for our city, all of you that work for the city, thank you. The prom, I read the Courier on Saturday and I thought, "I don't think anything's changing in this, as this ordinance." I just would like for you just to take a pause and, and think about the comprehensiveness of the, of the breed situation. We want all dogs be safe, all parents, all dog owners to be responsible and, and make it a win-win for Atama and a win-win for dogs, a win-win for pet. Melissa had a lot of good points. I think if you had a coalition of veterinarians, a dog behaviorist, ARL, just, just pause a minute, you, I, you're doing a great job thinking this through, just pause a minute, you want to do it right, let's just take a minute, pull in professionals and just do some, think, real delving, that's just all I ask and I might, might come back to a council member meeting, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Felicia Marrow.
That's Felicia Marrow and I am from seven one three three one hundred and twentieth avenue. Atama is my hometown, I graduated from high school and college here. When it comes to breed-specific language known as the pit bull ban, I grew up knowing what the city of Atama wanted me to know or think, to be scared, to be fearful, this was the breed that was deemed dangerous. In two thousand and twelve, the American Bar Association approved a new resolution urging all states, territorial, local legislative bodies and government agencies to repeal breed discriminatory or breed-specific provisions. This comprehensive recommendation is accompanied by an extensive report detailing the legion of problems associated with breed-specific regulations, including significant questions of due process, waste of government resources, documented failure to produce safer co- communities, enforcement issues connected with identifying the dogs to be regulated or seized, and infringement of property rights. According to the Sydney Ordinance, dangerous animal definition, which includes an animal which is not naturally tamed or gentle. When any pup is born, no matter the breed, they are playful, they have no idea what their breed is or what any other breed is, let alone that they are- are a dog. While physical traits can be clearly inherited, a breed is not a strong predictor of any individual dog's personality. The breed-specific language known as the pit bull ban actually goes off of characteristics, characteristics that constitute a danger, as in the definition. It is a gray area that comes down to 100% opinion of the animal control officer, the distinction between pit bulls and look-alike breeds such as boxers, bulldogs, bull mastiffs. So this breed-specific law isn't very breed-specific. A dog with muscular legs, block head, amber eyes, et cetera, they can pin any characteristics on a dog and deem it illegal. Why would anybody agree with the law that puts your dog at risk of being disposed of? For 20 years, this community has said, has paid the price, only generating and teaching bias fear of a stereotype or characteristics of a dog. These dogs are already in our community and are leaving and living and hiding. In my opinion, the community is more at risk from an attack with the ban in place due to these dogs not being socialized or allowed training. In my opinion, the city council should not lift the ban and put restrictions on owners, such as obedience training, microchipping, et cetera, rather than create a false sense of security in the community. As I stated previously, when in January, when I spoke, I live outside city limits on the river for over five years. I rescued a pit bull three years ago. Due to the breed-specific language known as pit bull ban, I am only allowed to take him to the vet within city limits, and that is flat-out it. Living in a flood zone and breed-specific languages less than two miles away when we need to escape the elements, trust me, it is absolutely the last resort. I do not want to bring my dog here. I will not leave my dog behind. I refuse. And I have refuged in complete fear and anxiety, because I have nowhere else to go other than Atamwa with my family. I am in complete fear and anxiety just from having to let my dog outside to use the restroom while I'm at work. Heaven forbid, in unknown surroundings, another family member lets out my dog just to get loose, pardon that, if worst-case scenario, knowing that it could be destroyed due to peace officers, being under no duty to combine, capture said dangerous animal, which is completely heart-wrenching. Thank you today.
Brandy Meredith.
Brandy Meredith, 108 South Adella. I would like to encourage the city council to revise Chapter 7 Animals and Fowls Municipal Code to remove breed-specific language. A few things to highlight was, one, the ordinance is not keeping the animals from being in the city limits. Why do we continue to fight it? Two, keeping the ordinance in effect will stunt community growth, as individuals will remove, I'm sorry, will move to other pet-friendly communities. And three, the shelters and rescues are already overwhelmed. I personally know of several homes that are currently, that currently own pit bulls or Staffordshire terriers within the city limits. The enforcement of the municipal codes ebbs and flows through animal control, and in a typical year, there's 10-plus that get picked up, that either need to be rehomed or sent to a rescue that is pit-friendly. Two, the new animal, I'm sorry, the new families that are relocating to Atamwa could potentially have a banned animal and not know it. These individuals will either break the law unknowingly, have to rehome their fur baby, or not move to the city limits at all. Other individuals like myself are actually looking to move out of the city limits because of the breed-specific law. Prohibiting individuals from possessing these animals in the city limits will slow the growth of the city. Three, I am a huge animal advocate. I've fostered numerous animals and will continue to point out the obvious. Our shelters and rescues are already overwhelmed. Now more than ever, because of lack of resources for span neuter clinics, owner surrenders, and strays, if we can prevent even a small number of animals having to be rehomed or sent to a shelter or rescue that are already in a loving home, I will count that as a win. In closing, the city is looking, is on borrowed time for BSL laws. The state is already looking at it. They continue to look at it. It's just a matter of getting it to a vote. It may not happen this year, but it will happen, and then we will be back in the same vote again. I encourage the city to work with Preston Moore, Director of Iowa for the Humane Society of the United States, to remove the breed-specific municipal codes and replace it with updated language, removing breed-specific language. He is a great resource, and the city should utilize that at its fullest. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Keith Hill.
Live at 1393465th Street, and we have rental properties here in Atamwa. I would like to just see the pit bull ban stay the way it is, because we've had chowls that, and the insurance man got to have a special insurance policy for that dog, and this lady could not afford that, so she got rid of the dog. But dogs have different personalities, and that's their property when they, when you go in there to repair something, or a appliance technician goes in to repair something, well, then they are in the dog's property, and the dog is very possessive of that area. So, I think we should respect the dog's property and not have dogs that would attack someone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, sir, I got a question. Is that a military veteran hat you got on?
What's that?
Is that a military veteran hat you have on? Is that a veteran hat you have on?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Thanks for serving, brother.
Oh, yeah, you're welcome. I was in Alaska for 26 months. Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, but I can't read the last name on this. I believe the first name is Ken. So just go ahead and tell us your name and your address, please.
My name's Kevin Whitcomb, and I live at 905 West Street, and I, and I would like, I don't talk very good, so I would like to have the ban stay, because since I've lived here, I've had two pit bulls come up on me and try to attack me, and I even had the law come and get one of them, and they gave it back to the person. And it broke into my house and attacked my dog that was in their crate. Luckily, I had my dog in her crate. It was all over the crate, trying to tear the crate apart and scare my dog to death. And that was one incident. They come and got that dog. And the other one was a neighbor's dog that, her brother's dog, that, from Faribault Field, and it, I happened to get that, get that in the yard. And anyways, it, one of them come up on me, and, and, well, it stared me down and all that, was growling at me, but I stood, stood there, because I know I've been attacked by dogs before, in three different occasions when I was a child, so, and my lip, my legs, and, so I know what it's like to be attacked by a dog. So, you know, I'm not really fond of the pit bulls and the pit, any of the off-breeds, you know, they've been running, they were running around, what they were doing, and I've noticed a lot, in my area, there's a lot of dogs running around. And pit bulls, and pinchers, and whatever else, so, I mean, so that's about all that I needed to say, so.
Thank you. The last person that we have a sheet on is Aleah Deleon. I probably have messed up that last name. I apologize, because I think I mispronounced it the other time, too.
No, you were really close. I am Aleah Deleon. I live at 801 West Third Street. I am with the coalition. I can sympathize with the Hills, which happened to pay extra money, more money for their insurance for their rental houses. So there's, there's different choices that they have. They can either not rent to people who own vicious dogs. They have said chowls. Chowls are not considered under the BSL as being a quote-unquote vicious dog. It's just the way those dogs are. I've been chased down by chowls. My son has been chased down by chowls. Those aren't pit bulls. When I was younger, I actually was attacked in the face by a chow, and we actually got locked. So it took a couple people for them to actually unlock, because the tooth went up underneath of my jaw, and it got stuck. So we were literally interlocked. Still, they're allowed here in city limits. I've seen several pit bulls around, running around loose. I've never had any run-ins with any horrible pit bulls. I've had them come up in my yard with my dogs outside on their leash, in their kennels, never had any issues with them. I have owned pit bulls. I've owned pit bull mixes, never had any issues with them. We've rescued them. We've had one that we rescued from agency. When we got her, her neck was slit. She had hair missing, sores, huge sores. She is the absolute most gentle dog that we have ever owned. She's, I think, pushing 14 now. She has to eat special food. She has, like, no teeth. We've had officers come to our house. They've looked at her, pet her. They've never had any issues. She's been up-to-date on her shots and everything. We've done foster care. They've never had any issues. We've shown vet records and licensing for her. We've done foreign exchange as well. We've adopted, never had any issues. And I just really feel that the BSL, it really needs to be changed, not to pit bull ban, but for vicious animals, like we've seen today with the Keldermans. Their dog wasn't a pit bull. They said it was gentle. You can see that about any dog. Any dog can turn, not just the pit bulls. You just hear about pit bulls more than the other dogs, because you see them everywhere. You don't hear about the dog bites that come into the clinics, because they're not pit bull. You don't hear about the kids coming in to the clinic, because it was attacked by a random dog that wasn't a pit bull. That is one question that we do ask when somebody comes in. Well, what kind of dog was it? Do you know if it's been up-to-date on rabies shots? Is it your dog? Do you know whose dog it is? We do ask those questions. A lot of the time, like, I've worked for the clinics for about three years, not once has it ever been said that it was a pit bull. We've heard German Shepherd quite often. We've heard black lab, chow. We've heard those other dogs, but those other dogs are still allowed inside city limits. But then pit bulls, pit bull mixes, they're not. So the wording definitely needs to be changed, not to just the pit bull ban, but to dangerous animals. And it can be any dog that can hurt somebody. You just never know.
Thank you very much.
Can I just make a couple comments? So first off, I would encourage everyone to read the ordinance, because I think there is some great things. So if you do have some comments on other things in the ordinance, I think it's important. So I'll be honest, I struggle with this issue for a couple of reasons. One, I can see both sides. One of my big struggles, too, is let's say we move the pit bull to a dangerous animal. There's expectations that are required of, or not dangerous animal, I'm sorry, a high-risk animal, and there's expectations, like, people said, you neuter your, neuter your pit. There's rabies vaccination, spay or noodle, vaccinate, chip it.
Ensure it.
Ensure, thank you. Different things like that are identified under high risk. So if we were to move pit bull to that, my, there would be all these things that need to be done. My concern is, we've also heard tonight, that a lot of people have said that there are pit bulls in this town. We all know that there are pit bulls in the town. But I struggle with, how do I know that if I ask, or if I were to say, hey, let's move it to a high risk, that those things will be followed? I have all these, I have people from the coalition identifying that these are the things that we can do to ensure that there is safety, and, but right now, pit bulls are banned in Atamwa, and we still have pit bulls. We still have people not following that. And we still, I think Melissa said that there are, these animals are not being socialized, which we all know, I think we can all agree, that animals that are not socialized is very dangerous, because they don't have those social skills around people, other animals. So how are we being responsible pet owners when that kind of stuff is happening? And I understand that this ban has been in place for a long time, but what happens if we lift this ban, and now we have all these animals that have not been socialized? Or we have these expectations for people, so they can have pit bulls, but then they're not followed? And I know a lot of this comes back to enforcement and that kind of stuff, too, but these are things all that we have to consider. We have to look at that. But I would like you to consider that, too. You are the ones, and I'm looking at the coalition side here, you are the ones asking for this stuff, but how do we know you are going to follow that when it hasn't been followed at this point? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Does anybody else on the council want to make any comments before we vote on the motion to table? Okay, we do have a motion that's been seconded to table the animal ordinance till further work can be done on it, and it'll be brought back to the council at a future date. People will be afforded the opportunity at that point to speak again. And I would agree with what Councilwoman Galloway said. When the new one comes out in the revision, I hope people will really take time to read through it. There is a lot of stuff in there that's kind of hard to get your head wrapped around, but we are trying to come up with an animal ordinance that deals with all kinds of animals, not just pit bulls. So we don't have an ordinance for pit bulls. We got an ordinance for this, an ordinance for that. So I know it kind of gets everything thrown in one ordinance, but I hope people will take the time to read it and understand it, so when you come back the next time, you can ask some questions if there's still areas in the revised ordinance that you feel need clarification, or you don't understand. So, we'll go ahead and vote now on the motion to table the animal ordinance tonight.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
At this point of the agenda, I'll ask if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak on any other item that's not on tonight's agenda. We always provide people an opportunity to bring things up that aren't on our agenda. So does anybody have anything that's not on the agenda tonight that they want to bring to the attention of the council? If not, we have no other petitions or communications.
Well, actually, I do. I want to thank Chris for all the work that she does. This is Professional Clerks Week, and so I think we just all need to recognize how awesome our city clerk is, and I truly appreciate that.
I second that. I would agree.
And then one other thing. Main Street had the Main Street Awards, and Atamwa won the Main Street Facade Improvement Award for the bank, I don't remember what street it is, but...
On Main Street.
Thanks, on Main Street.
200 block of Main Street.
200 block of Main Street, so another great accomplishment.
Yes, that was great.
And Cinco de Mayo.
And while you're on a roll, the city also just got another $300,000 for some further facade improvement work in downtown Atamwa.
A lot of great things. Yes.
I would, at this juncture, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
We are adjourned, and I really do appreciate everybody for coming and being patient tonight so we could hear your comments, and we'll continue this hopefully here in the next month when the other changes get made. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.